I'm going to call this meeting to order. We start every meeting with a pledge of allegiance and please rise and join us.
My fellow delegates to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is part of the meeting where we ask for public comment. If you want to have a comment when we're in one of the agenda items, I'll give you a chance to talk then. If you want to talk to something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. And seeing no one, we'll go on to the next agenda item. That's the report of the mayor and the city commissioners. And we'll start down with Commissioner LaFave.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of things. So first off, I want to welcome back all the students and staff and administration to the schools. A welcome back. I hope everybody had a great summer and hopefully we're off to a really good start for a new year. And I want to thank Public Safety very much. Thank you so much for your amazing efforts this morning. I had a lot of parents and students come up to me saying that they were thrilled with the crossing guard and with the officers at the schools. And I know the kids got a kick out of it. So thank you so much for that. I think it was a really great start to the new year. Also, I want to mention that Taste of East was a great success. So thanks so much to the GBVA and to all volunteers. I also was one of the volunteers and was able to sell tickets. I met people from Toronto, from around our area, from Chicago. There were people from all over buying tickets. And it was a great event. I think the weather was just about as perfect as we could have gotten. So I think that was a really fun event. Lastly, I just want to mention that last week at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, we finalized a draft for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And that's going to be available on the city's website and also down in the office. So if you can, please take a peek, look through it and see if you have any comments. And reach out and let us know. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ziegler?
Yeah, certainly reiterate a lot of that, but I guess specifically it was fun talking about the Taste of East Festival. Just want to thank everyone for coming out. It's a good collaboration between the business owners and the community. And thank you again for Public Safety for volunteering some time there as well. Thankfully, the truck did not have to leave at all, so it was there a whole time, which means the whole community stayed safe during that whole festival as well. So just so thankful that we have this level of collaboration that happens within our community, not just at Taste of East, but throughout the year. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
All I have to say was I think the crossing guard additions were a success. I heard from a few people that they really liked them. So I think it was a success. So but welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hammerick?
So I wanted to also comment on how successful, seemingly successful, the Taste was. I was there selling tickets as well and ate a lot of food. And I really enjoyed seeing, there were a lot of kids, there were a lot of children that were participating in all the different children's activities. And I know they got a real kick out of it. Bounce House and things like that, that was very successful. Also, now, I didn't talk with anyone that came from as far away as Toronto, but I did talk with a gentleman who rode his bike from the northwest side. So he rode all the way here just to go to the Taste, which is great. Because we are a bikeable community and we encourage that. So I was really excited to find out that he rode that far. So that's fun. Thank you.
Commissioner.
So it is, it's bittersweet that summer is ending this quickly and that we're in August, Link. It feels like August 1st to August 19th. And we're welcoming everyone back to school and starting to talk about those things that herald the arrival of fall. So I'm not going to dwell on any of that other than to say and reiterate my thanks to Public Safety for a great first day of school. It's always the day that everyone kind of holds their breath and hopes that things go well. And they did, so thank you. I wanted to just call attention to someone because when I was in middle school, one thing I wanted least was a group of adults calling attention to me. But Lucullian is here. He's a Boy Scout and as part of his scouting, he needs to attend a city commission meeting or a public meeting. And I just think it's a good time to reflect on how beneficial that is for kids. And it's not something I got to do as a child because I wasn't a Boy Scout. So I think scouting is pretty neat for our kids and it's great to have you here, Luke. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I think everyone's covered it really well tonight, so I don't think I have anything else to add.
And Doug LaFave?
I have nothing else to add either.
All right. Just wanted to mention that we do have a ribbon cutting this Saturday for Mix. Is that the correct name? New business in town. It's already opened. I've seen many people making their way there, which is great. But the official ribbon cutting is on Saturday and I believe there's some activities around that. So encourage people to go there. But I also want to do a big thank you to Public Safety, period. There's so much that Public Safety does. And recently, I've had several opportunities at block parties to attend with the Public Safety Officers, explain the Public Safety Officer's role and see the interaction with our officers and the kids at the block parties. And it's just so magical. And the residents like hearing the stories of how we run our Public Safety Office. And all the commissioners up here know what a good system that we have, combining fire, police, and medical first responders. And a lot of our residents don't realize that model and don't realize how it saves us money. So it's fun to be able to do that, but more importantly, just to see the interaction. And we'll be talking about the, what you'd mentioned earlier about how the officers were there this morning. But, and I want to thank Public Safety and I want to thank Doug LaFave for putting this program forward to have the officers out there and have them being seen and more importantly, to enforcing those safety rules. So, thank you. All right. So we'll move on to the first agenda item. And that is a request to consider additional crossing guards for school crosswalks. And Doug LaFave will present.
Okay, this is something that we've been looking at over the summer, since last school year and moving in through our infrastructure, or I'm sorry, our personnel committee. And I want to step back a little bit just to talk about some of the, some of the changes that we've made in just this recent past year as well. And certainly, there's always more that we can continue to do when it comes to pedestrian safety in the community. So I just wanted to go back to last year and note Traffic Controller Number 53, which was a review we did of all of our school crosswalk areas. And we had a pretty extensive review and report. Those, that report was accepted and that traffic controller was implemented by city staff this past year. Also, we also then approved Traffic Control Order Number 54, which was the use and placement of in-street school crosswalk signs with our crossing guard program that we have. So that was something else that was approved and implemented and currently in place. The other thing that was approved was the use of permanent radar speed feedback signs. And so while we've approved a policy for that, that policy requires that we do a certain amount for, for particular speed studies that show that there's an eighty-fifth percentile above what the posted speed is. So in those locations where we do find that, we'll be coming back to the city commission for the placement of those signs to help address speeds. Also, I want to just note that since the 2015 Streets and Sidewalks Millage, we have been making improvements to our traffic signals. So in particular, we have upgraded at some of our locations our crosswalk countdown. That's in place. And certainly are looking at any additional measures that we can enact to make those improvements as well. But I just wanted to, before we get into the specifics of the crossing guards and the potential addition there, just make sure that everyone understands that we, the city staff in particular, really take to heart any concerns that we have from residents and really need those concerns to be brought to our attention. And that's what we're here for. I know there are some different groups out there that are not communicating with the city. And we really need to make sure that people are coming directly to us so that we can address those issues because that's what we're here for. So we need people to contact my office. We need people to contact the Department of Public Safety. And we certainly take everything very seriously. And we're happy to act on anything that's insufficient. So I just wanted to make sure that we got that out there.
Well, and I want to add to that. They also can contact you to come in and have a meeting.
Absolutely.
And discuss their ideas, discuss ideas they've heard, discuss whatever. Because we need to have that conversation instead of people just lobbing ideas out there. This, this, this. You know, we could have a plethora of signs that don't make sense, thousands of speed bumps and, you know, many different signs and crosswalks and everything else. This is well thought out. We don't just do it on a whim. Everything is very well thought out. And so it, the, when people come in and have conversations, I would say ninety-five percent of the time, they leave saying that was such good information to have, but they can't have it if they don't call. So thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I just, that's important.
And we've also, staff has also updated more information on things that we do. We're some studies and different information pieces on the city's website on our traffic page, too. So we encourage people to check that out because we've tried to put a lot of the frequently asked questions that we, that we get out there to kind of explain the nuances of what those are. So we just encourage people to check that out as a resource as well. Now, we'll transition into the request tonight for consideration for adding two additional permanent crossing guards. Currently, we have crossing guards stationed in each one of the elementary schools along the major street adjacent to them. And, you know, we've, we've heard in recent years, and I think in conjunction with a lot of the distracted behaviors that are proliferating out there with motorists and with pedestrians as well. And we've had conversations and really felt that the best intervention there is to have somebody who is a trained crossing guard that is going to be paying attention to those, those pedestrians and motorists in the area to help make those crossings safer for our children crossing to the high school and the middle school. So the locations would be, we did start implementing this with temporary crossing guards today. Location at Lake Drive and Bagley for the high school and also at the middle school location, Lake Drive in Kennesaw. We've noted the, the costs, the fiscal impact is about eight five hundred dollars per year. And we noted what the cost is annually, which is in the mid forties that the city contributes towards that program. Have had conversations with the superintendent with support of, of these crossing guards. And they're looking at ways that they might be able to partner with us. But given the state budget at this point in time and some questions they have, they're waiting for consideration on their end. But certainly support the program. So we're looking at a fiscal impact, as noted, but we believe that we can achieve that through some savings. The city commission has charged us with really taking a look at some of our operational, operations and public safety. And we've been doing an exercise to look at with our reorganization this summer, look at how we can look at potential savings to, with that reorganization. I believe that with what we've demonstrated through August 11th here, we've demonstrated that we could save about thirty-two hundred dollars. So I think we can demonstrate that over the course of the year, we can cover those costs for the additional crossing guards without any budget.
Good, thank you. Questions? Yeah, any questions?
Just, just for clarification's sake, I'd like that we're speaking with the schools about a partnership. Can you talk about how the existing crossing guards that we've had for a number of years are funded? Is that entirely a city funding or is it school pay for some of it?
Correct. At this time, it's fully funded by the city. Although, looking forward with these costs, we just wanted to have that conversation. And we're also respectful of their budget constraints, too. So I've had a conversation with the superintendent and they're going to look internally and see what they can do to help, to help continue to partner with us.
Great. And one other question, just the memo indicates very specific times for these new crossing guards. Am I safe in assuming those are the same as the other crossing guards at the various intersections? I guess we maybe don't have them for the high school.
Yeah, they're, it's sort of a tentative timeline at this point in time. I think what we're going to do is, that's what we think the correct time, times seem to be, but we're monitoring that. We, you'll note that the high school crossing time is a little bit longer and that's only because that's not that far away from Walthy Elementary. And so we want to be cognizant of the potential for elementary students who might be using that crossing too or may want to. So we've extended that timeframe for that crossing. We're really going to leave that to Public Safety and the crossing guards to tell us what they're seeing out there to see if we need to tweak those timeframes. But that's initially out of the gate what we're looking at.
Great, thanks.
So if that, if that timeframe is a little bit longer by the high school, does that mean that that cost for that particular crossing guard is just a little bit more than it would normally be?
Slightly, slightly. And we included some training costs there, too, in that note of those numbers. So they're very close for what you have there in the budget. But that, what we have there doesn't, doesn't count for the additional time, which is pretty, you know.
Other questions, Commissioner LaFave? I'm going to have a, hold a public hearing on this. And I'll open the public hearing. If anyone wants to make comments on this agenda item, now would be the time to step forward, give your name and address and make your comments. Okay, so no one moving, so I will close that and bring it up here and ask for a motion. Motion to approve the request to consider additional crossing guards for school crosswalks.
Second.
And any comments? No comments.
Yeah, I, this is, this is a, I know it's a motion to consider, but I mean, we're, we're making the decision today, right? I mean, this is, okay, just want to make sure of that. I want to, I'll comment very briefly. When I first moved to East Grand Rapids, part of the reason I moved here and part of the reason so many people move here is because of the lockability, because it is a community that is pedestrian friendly. And I think there was a little bit of a sense when I first moved here, and this is about six years ago, and I can't speak for everybody, but that, that we could do better in terms of pedestrian safety, that perhaps we were a little bit too reliant on just, well, it meets the minimum standards, it meets the state requirement, therefore, we're good. And I'm really pleased that even just in my two years on the commission here, a little less than two years now, I feel like there is a bit of a culture shift in regards to our willingness to really look at best practices and think creatively, think outside the box in some ways about how can we really be the safest community possible with regards to pedestrian safety. And I think this is another step towards that. I like that we are considering things that are well thought out, that are incremental improvements, that we can test and see whether or not they make sense and kind of adapt and evolve as we need to. And I think that the crossing guards at these two intersections is another example of that. I don't think we should rest on our laurels. I appreciate Mr. LaFave's comments that this is kind of a evolutionary, ongoing process. You're never done with pedestrian safety. It's just always something that you're looking at, always something that we're looking to improve. And I think this is another good step towards that. So I'm happy to vote in favor.
Thank you.
Well, something, something I definitely want to underscore here, I think that's important, that it's a conversation that we got quite often in our infrastructure meetings and things, is social media and all the, the conversations or the, you know, the comments that are going on on social media about this topic. And I think it is so important, what you were saying, Mr. LaFave, about reaching out to the city to get, to get accurate information, to get your questions answered. The door is always open. And not only just to the city, but also to your commissioners. I mean, you can always call them, you can pick up the phone, you can email all of us. We're all very accessible with your direct questions. And then if there's something that we can answer for you, then we can always find out for you. And I think that's really important because there's a lot that happens on social media that isn't always accurate and a lot of emotions are flying around. And it's not just with traffic safety, but it can be with a lot of different topics that involve our community. So I think, I'm glad you mentioned that, you know, it's, you have an open door here and we need to take advantage of that. So.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say that I agree with Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Walters, but I think this is just a great step in the right direction. And I love the fact that Doug LaFave said it's just an ongoing process, we're never done. And, but this is a great step. And so I'm pleased to be on this.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Commissioner Walters, it's incremental. We wouldn't want to just throw everything out there, right? I mean, and we're saying on social media, we can put out eighteen things tomorrow and some of them will work and some won't, it'll be a mess. So we have to do this incrementally and do it smart. And although we think outside of the box a bit, we also use the uniform traffic codes at the rate.
And Michigan may use a uniform traffic code.
Yeah. And so some people say, well, you're just following the, there's a reason we follow them. They are, they are best practices. They are what, we don't want to go to one community and have everything this way, go to another community and have their rules all different. If we're more uniform, then people can follow them. And they're based on data and experience. And so that's why we do follow that. But certainly today with, and I want to thank Mr. LaFave because he brought that, he brought that up and he brought that to us and said, I think that this would be a good step to take. And I appreciate the fact that what we don't know is, we know it here on the commission, but what the city often doesn't appreciate is that this is what staff does. Our city staff is excellent and they are working on this all the time. So you might be having conversations on Facebook, but what you don't know is that we are looking at this all the time and they're talking about what can we do to make it better and why will this work and why won't we want to do this right now? But what can we look at? This is an ongoing conversation and not just with this, but with everything that we do in the city. Our city staff is excellent. So you may hear us at a meeting for an hour or two every other Monday, but, but that's not really the running of the city. This is a city commission that oversees and makes sure that their folks understand the right things, but the day-to-day work, the heavy lifting is done by city staff. And I want to thank you for continuing to do this and for the city staff that, and the Public Safety Officers that are always looking at this. I appreciate that very much. And I also wanted to make, mention what Commissioner Miller said when you were asking about who pays for this. And I, I would dare anyone to find another city where the, the city is paying for the crossing guards. That's another one of the many things that we do to support our schools. Most districts, I dare say all other districts, but I could be probably wrong, the school district pays for the crossing guard. So this is just another example of how we partner with them and I'm, and I'm happy and proud that we do so. But thank you for bringing that idea forward.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion and a second. And all those in favor of adding the two additional crossing guards, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Department Community Engagement Programs. And Mark Carroll will be presenting.
First, I'd like to thank you for approving the crossing guard post. Crossing guards would be very happy about that today, particularly the ones that we call so. We've got three programs that I kind of want to talk about here, though. But the first one we've done, since I'm talking about, is the Adult Crossing Guard Program. You probably have the most, in Kent County, you know for sure. Because when we did the research, you have the most robust adult crossing guard program in Kent County. Nobody doesn't like we do. Now, we kind of take that for granted, routine, but the number of posts, the location of the post, when we talk to the other cities, nobody doesn't like we do. So that's a good thing. That's what we want, make sure that our kids are safe when they go to school. So I think it's important that you know that. We had eight posts before. We now have ten posts, a new post at Lake Drive in Kennesaw and at Lake Drive, Bagley, and St. Mirand. So, and I was out there this morning and they seemed to work quite well. Now, it's the first day of school, so there's a lot of little chaos going on out there, all that kind of stuff. It went quite well, except people weren't quite used to seeing crossing guards, at least our residents who are used to that or the people that travel through the city on Lake Drive. So, but in general, it went very well. I did get some comments from the middle school kids that were positive for the most part. Told quite a few kids they needed to put their helmets on. So, but that was good. That's the purpose of the program under the umbrella of community engagement here. We want to get the officers out there, talking to residents and students in a slightly different way where we can interact in a positive manner. So now, that being said, does anybody else have any questions about the Adult Crossing Guard Program? For today, it went very well. On the times, there was some discussion about the times. I do want to talk about that. That's why the tentative is kind of bold in there. Each school has a slightly different time, some are the same, but we've got six schools and the start times are slightly different. So that's why those times are tentative, because as the city manager said, Walthy Elementary, some of those kids traverse down that way when they go to school in the morning. So we just want to make sure that we're catching those middle school kids. You know, in about a month or a month and a half, we'll have this figured out. But the times this morning seem to work fine. Anybody have any comments on the crossing guard program? Okay. Now, the second one that I want to talk about is the Enhanced School Safety Program. Eight years ago, I think when Dr. Schubel was here, I approached her with the idea of doing the SOL program, Student Law Enforcement Together program. The program's still in effect. Officers go out every day, visit the schools every day, building relationships. But there's also a secondary component to that, which was very important to me at the time and is still important today as security. And we can't forget that. All right? Particularly in the world we live in today, which is unfortunate to say, but it's the truth. The purpose of that program was to build relationships with the schools, the administrators, the teachers, the kids, but also provide a level of protection so that you have a visible marked cruiser at that school every day. What I want to do with this program here is kind of take it to the next level. All right? So every day, in the morning, when the kids are coming to school and when they're going home in the afternoon, we're going to have an officer there. Again, visible, physical presence, interacting with the students, the teachers, so they get to know us, we get to know them. Mayor, you said earlier, we do a really good job of this, but we can do more. It's very important that we get out there and engage the community in a positive regard. So it's a interpersonal relationship development, public trust development, but it's also for security and safety purposes. Again, this morning, it went pretty good. Had good conversations with some of the kids, you know. I don't know if I'd like to tell them to put their helmets on, but that was a good thing. So just little things like that. It's very important that we engage with the community that day. So that's the purpose of that program. And I intend on doing that, the department intends on doing that every day. Wasn't too impactful on our normal shift structure. Again, what worked to our advantage this time was the different school's start times, you know, so that worked out quite good. Again, we'll monitor the program, see how it goes, but that's where we are with that program. Again, enhancement of the SOL program, but just to provide level of security and safety for the kids, have them meet our department officers as well. Any thoughts or comments on that?
I just want to say, I think that this is great. And as you said, you had to tell a lot of kids to put their helmets on. Somebody standing there with a uniform, saying that with a smile on their face, but meaning it, is going to have such a big impact versus a crossing guard or a teacher or another parent. You know, I was a middle schooler once and it'll be, yeah, 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 yeah. And maybe they'll wear it, maybe they won't. But, but that, real-time feedback is going to make a huge difference. That real-time, you need to crawl, you need to get off your bike when you cross the street. Why don't you have a flashing light on? It's so dark this morning and you're riding your bike. Having that real-time input is going to make a huge difference. So thank you for, for assigning the officers to do that. I think this is great stuff.
And if you can, I had a conversation with the city attorney just before the meeting tonight, but it seems like the number of kids wearing helmets is going down, just from my casual observation this morning. So if we all participate in this and when we see a young person without a helmet, I think that would be a good thing because they fall and hit their head and they don't have their helmet. It's just, you know, it took, think about it this way, thirty to forty years before we got used to wearing seatbelts, right? I'm old enough to remember when I was a kid, you didn't always wear your seatbelt and it wasn't even encouraged. So it's one of those things that just takes a long time and we have to be consistent. The Crosswalk Education Zones. Now, this is an interesting one. This is one that is done around the country and other places in Michigan, and they've done them in Grand Rapids as well. This is a program that we would like to start probably in September. But I'm going to push that start date back. It's not starting the first day of school because this one's a little more complex because there's pedestrian laws involved, motor vehicle laws involved, and not everybody understands that. So what we're thinking about doing is probably starting out with some kind of a morning period. Again, this is all up for debate, up for discussion because we want to do this correctly. And what they've done in other cities is they had like a two, two-week morning period, okay? Where people, you can present them with the information, present the pedestrians with the information on what they're supposed to do at crosswalk, try and present the information for motorists so that we're all safe. You know, if we can remember one thing, just use common sense and don't cross the road. It is not absolutely safe to do. That's probably rule number one. All right? So we're looking at the laws. I'm probably going to contact the city attorney, Terry Fias, to go over some of the legal ramifications with our officers because there is some gray area. This is, this is one of those things that it's not always an absolute. You know, sometimes the pedestrian has the right way, sometimes they don't. Sometimes a motor vehicle has the right way, sometimes they don't. And then there's this kind of gray area, you know, where you really have to think about. So our plan is to do this kind of periodically. This won't be in every day. Think of it as a direct patrol on an as-needed basis. Months of August, September, October, sometime in the spring. Try and do it at intersections, high-traffic volume with pedestrians around the schools. And it may not be during school hours either, you know, it could be on the weekends, you know. And then once we get all of our research done, get our game plan in place, then we'll be able to roll it out. in place, then we'll be able to roll it out. And there'll be a significant public education component to this, the way that I see this. I just don't want to roll this out and have people start complaining to the City Commission, I got to take up for a crosswalk education zone. We'd like to have them understand what's going on before we do it. So, we're looking at sometime in September on that. But again, this is another part of the community engagement piece, where it could just be something as simple as talking to a pedestrian, or if you pull a driver over, just look at, you know, pay attention, we're going through that crosswalk. Because every day when I go run around the track, you know, I'm paying attention to what I'm doing, because sometimes drivers aren't always focused on what they're doing. We do have a problem with distracted driving. We do have a problem with distracted walking, you know, so we all need to pay attention and take our own personal safety into account. So that's where we are with those three community engagement programs. I think they're, they're really good programs, you know, that are going to help this community. And I also know that the schools, as has been previously mentioned, I had a meeting with Dr. Katula last week, you know, they're all on board with every one of these programs, and that's exactly what we want, because for us to have a safe community, every one of us has to do our own little personal part. You know, it's more than just a public safety department. So, now, when we start crosswalk education zone, and if there is a citation to be issued, or if somebody's friend gets a ticket, you know, this is where the City Commission can come in handy and help us out, because we're going to have a tendency to write maybe some of our neighbors and, you know, that kind of thing. So we want to make sure that we get that word out there, but then asking for your support when we do our enforcement efforts, you know, after our, our morning education period, whatever, whatever you call it. And then we'll see how that goes as well. Again, it's all to make our communities safer. It's a pretty important part where our community is going right now, and from what we're getting from the residents, you know, it fits right in what we're going. So those are the three things that I wanted to talk about. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Quick question. So I, I, the crosswalk education zone, I think that's a great idea. In fact, so the, the motorist piece, except for other communities that have done this, and I know that they had, they would have a plainclothes officer act, like a pedestrian, and the neighbors would get excited. We'd get excited, because especially East Grand Rapids, we're kind of a pass-through community. You know, so many people are going from, you know, Forest Hills to downtown and whatnot. I bet the neighbors would really enjoy, and a ticket, I think, I think would be effective, you know, especially to people passing through to say, look, you need to, you need to pay attention to this one. So I think that's a great idea.
I agree with that, and that's one of the strategies that, you know, we're thinking about. But again, we want to take our time and do that, but it's worked well in other communities, just, just so people start paying attention.
Yeah, and at least the other places where I live, the neighbors were really appreciative and excited about that.
That's great.
And when you say back us up, what that means is everyone needs to know that none of us can ever say, would you just rip that tip, ticket up? Once it's written, it's written. And a city commissioner, the mayor, the city manager, none of us can rip that up. You have to go through the proper channels like you would with any ticket. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just a request, I guess. I, I like these new ideas. They're exciting, and it's good to see us thinking in the right direction for a lot of these issues, I think. I, I would love to have like a periodic report back on the effectiveness of some of this stuff. I think it'd be great to know how it's going, and I'm excited to see it start, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
And again, I want to thank Doug LaFave and the chief for working together on this. Another example, as I said earlier, city's always working on this stuff, and they certainly are listening and always trying to do things better. And I think that these are really three wonderful examples. So thank you.
I would, I would just add that, you know, these, these concepts and ideas are stuff that we have heard from community members that have reached out to us. Also, I know I've had conversations with every single one of you up here too, on various degrees of these different programs, and that's what we want tonight, just to bring you up to speed on, we're starting implementation this week on these items and moving forward with them. So I appreciate everybody from the public who does reach out to us and has, you know, helped us look at some of these things, staff, public safety officers who have been a part of some of these and all.
I think you also mentioned mutual responsibility, and I like to remind residents of that. It doesn't matter if, I guess I've said it before, it doesn't matter if you are a hundred percent in the right, and you go out in traffic because you're allowed to. If you, if you don't look carefully and you say, see, that car was wrong, but it hit me, well, you don't really win anyway. So it's really this mutual responsibility. We can have, you know, ninety-nine percent of the cars doing the right thing, but it's all of us. The pedestrians have to be careful, the drivers have to be careful. You have to assume, always assume the other person's going to do the wrong thing, so that you're walking defensively, driving defensively, biking defensively. So.
Yeah, one of the things, Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up. Just last point is somehow we've gotten to the point where some people, our residents, seem to think that they have rights if they're on a bike, or on the roadway, or walking over a vehicle. That's not true. It, it depends on circumstances. So it goes to exactly what you were saying. So depending on the circumstances, a pedestrian, a cyclist, or a motorist may or may not have the right way, and that's the way that we need to approach it. And we need to approach it for the fact that you need to take your safety in your own hands, and don't do anything that is not smart, regardless of what the law is, and so.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for presenting this program, and thank you for working with Doug LaFave and the rest of the PSOs and city staff. It was great. Thank you. You know, I had it written down, and I forgot to say at the beginning, we were going to have a, a executive session afterwards, but to discuss impending litigation, but that has been taken off the agenda for this week, and we may be having it a couple weeks from now. So it is off the agenda at this point. So last on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
Any comments about any of the items? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. All right, this, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.